All right, anyone opposed to excusing Councilmember Amy Miller from tonight's meeting? Please state your opposition. All right, hearing none, the motion passes and she is excused. Um, Clerk, could you do the roll call please?
Mayor Dexter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Present.
Councilmember Miller? Councilmember Sherman Warren?
I'm here.
I'm here.
Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Suggs?
Here.
Manager West?
Present.
Acting Attorney Kogil?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you can please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have two proclamations this evening. I'm gonna start with one that we're doing. Thank you. Um, because it's a good one to do. Um, and then another one we have, um, well, they're both good, but we have someone to receive one of them, so I'm gonna do the one without a recipient first. Um, and I guess the recipient is all of us. So, a proclamation recognizing women's history month. Whereas, women of every race, class, orientation, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation and community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have opened the doors to opportunity for subsequent generations of dreamers and doers. As community leaders, educators, doctors, scientists, and more, women power our economy and lead our nation and community. On January 12th, 1982, Dorothy Duncan was the first woman to be elected the mayor of the city of Port Angeles, being chosen by her colleagues to serve her city, blazing the trail for others to step into leadership roles. And whereas, the city of Port Angeles is proud to employ talented women in every department and celebrates their dedication to public service and the work they do to improve our city and community. And whereas, Port Angeles women have paved the way in our community as founders, CEOs, and presidents in a variety of industries, and many of these women play important roles in the community beyond being entrepreneurs. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued. However, women continue their work to advance gender equity and equality. Let us celebrate the contributions of women throughout our history and honor the stories that have too often gone untold as they represent the very best of America. Let us recognize that fundamental freedoms are interconnected. When opportunities for women are withheld, we all suffer, and when women's lives are improved, we all gain. Now therefore, I Kate Dexter, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month in the city of Port Angeles and encourage all residents to participate in celebrating all women and strive to create a community where every woman of any age knows that her possibilities know no bounds in our community. Thank you. All right, and the next one, I will come to the front, and Joyce, if you would meet me.
All right, um, thank you. I will quickly introduce Joyce, read the proclamation, and then if you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to do that. Um, Joyce Vollman is meeting, uh, joining us this evening. She is the co-chair of the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society's Conservation Committee, and we are doing a proclamation this evening um, in recognition of Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society Lights Out Initiative. So I'll just start and read that part again. A proclamation in recognition of the Olympic Peninsula Audubon Society Lights Out Initiative. Whereas, bird migration is the seasonal movement of birds flying between breeding grounds and wintering grounds that occurs each spring and fall. Over thirty-five million birds will fly over Clough County during spring migration. And whereas, bird migration is a journey rife with risks, eighty percent of North American bird species migrate at night, relying on national, natural cues like the moon and stars to navigate. And whereas, North America has seen the demise of more than three billion birds since nineteen seventy. And whereas, more than ninety-nine percent of the people in the United States live under haze of light pollution which fragments the night sky. And whereas, light pollution in the form of bright lights and sky glow disorients migrating birds, causing collisions with windows and solid objects, or confusion as they circle and beams until exhausted. And whereas, nighttime lights pointed toward the sky or outwards at the landscape creates excessive amounts of light. And whereas, migrating birds are particularly at risk on nights with low cloud ceiling and foggy weather, where light reflecting on clouds is disorienting. And whereas, whereas, lights off is critical between midnight and sunrise during spring and fall bird migration periods. That's April, May, and September, October. And now therefore, I Kate Dexter, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of Port Angeles, ask on this World Migratory Bird Day, the second Saturday in May and October and other days during the migratory period, that fellow residents and businesses turn off unnecessary lights, dim or turn off unneeded interior building lights, use timers or motion sensor lights where required, and make sure exterior lights are pointed downward and shielded from reaching the sky. We also ask that they direct illumination just to targeted areas, use a warm color light source, and overall restrict lighting to a minimum. Together, we can do our part to help birds navigate migration safely. Thank you, and thank you for coming. Before I hand the mic over, I thought this was particularly timely. My son is in high school and they're working on civics projects in school, and his area of focus is the night sky, and he keeps telling me how it's too bright in Port Angeles and he should be able to see more stars. So he will appreciate this proclamation especially, and I will hand this over to you if you'd like to say a few words.
Um, I want to thank the city of Port Angeles. I have, uh, allergies right now, so I can't talk for very long.
Well, thank you so much for the work that you all do and for coming this evening.
All right, um, we've rearranged our agenda, um, and now are at late items. Are there any late items from staff?
Mayor and Council, no late items this evening.
Right, any late items from council? Okay, um, that brings us to public comment. Um, if you are joining us virtually, please raise your virtual hand. It's star three on your phone, um, or the raise hand button on the WebEx app. Um, and as a reminder, first public comment period is items on tonight's agenda. And I have one person, two people signed up. And it looks like one is definitely on the agenda, and the other is probably a second public comment period. Um, so, uh, James, go ahead. Oh, and I know you know, but just in case other folks are gonna speak, um, please state your name and whether or not you're a resident.
So my name is James Taylor. I live here in the city of Port Angeles, so I'm a resident. I think council needs to be congratulated. I know I don't ever say anything nice about you guys. But last session, Brendan saw the software package that was unnecessary and overpriced, and he raised his hand, and the rest of you got on board and said, yes, we don't need to spend this money on the software package. That is one of the few times where I've heard you acknowledge that this isn't a necessary expense, and so now I'm gonna go dwell into another unnecessary expense. I'm gonna pick on Scott today. There are four vehicles in this proposal, uh, in this agenda. One has ninety-three thousand, one has ninety-one thousand, and two of them have sixty-three thousand miles. I challenge you to go look at your odometers and ask if your vehicles are obsolete. I think a way to around it so that somebody can vote, vote of approval of all four would be to, okay, Scott, pick out the vehicle that you absolutely have to replace now, and then move the next one to the following year, to the following year, to the following year. That way you can distribute this two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar expense to the citizens of our community in a pattern that recognizes that these vehicles are very low miles. They're not emergency vehicles. I mean, Amy called out, well, this is an emergency vehicle, this police car that had sixty-three thousand last time I was here. But this expense, it means that the city doesn't have this money to spend it elsewhere, and it means that we're not, we're not meeting the needs of our community. Um, people can't afford a vehicle that even has sixty-three thousand on it. So I ask at least one of you to say no. And it'd be, you know, I expected to pass, you know, it's consent agenda, but can we at least say, let's spend money less quickly. Right, thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else which is speak at the first public comment period? Okay, I don't see it. Oh, Justin? And I don't have any hands online.
Justin Williamson, city occupant. Uh, last agenda meeting, or a couple of agenda meetings that I spoke about, miscellaneous consulting fees on the budget expenditure report, and I'm bringing that up again. Uh, this time it seems to be with one of the nonprofit districts, the waterfront district, they have like a fifty-four-thousand-dollar expenditure report. I'd just like to see that broken down a little bit more, like to see where the hourly is going, how much they're paying themselves, and where that money's being distributed, other than just getting around with, around with fifty-four thousand dollars for miscellaneous expenditure fees. And then also with supplies, I'd like to see those broken down a little more as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Ralston. I happen to be a resident of Port Angeles. I'm not overly prepared this evening, uh, as I didn't get to the agenda until late. I was gonna bring down and quote from Consumer Report magazine about one of the vehicles that's on this list. It's item number three on the consent agenda, the two thousand twenty-five Ford F-150 Lightning. It's not rated very highly with Consumer Reports, and they have other vehicles that are rated more highly. I expect that you guys are gonna pass everything that's on this consent agenda. What I'm trying to do is encourage you to not always look at Ford vehicles from this, uh, group that's tied to the state of Washington and look at alternatives, including high-quality used vehicles. I should have commented some time ago when you purchased the EV Mustangs. There are a lot of other EV vehicles that are more highly rated than those Mustangs by an independent entity called Consumer Reports, which is a magazine that I subscribe to, and I'd be happy to share it with council at any time. Thank you. Oh, one other say, because of all these items here, I'm still concerned about, well, money's gonna come from the feds to the state, state to the county, and/or city. So sooner or later, you're gonna need to tighten some things up. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay. Is your item for, on tonight's agenda? Okay, go ahead. Are you Steve?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure based on what was listed there, so.
I am Steve Brown, six-two-two South Valley Street. My wife Philomena and I have lived there for forty-eight years. We have a son that works for the city. I'm here today about my right-of-way use permit that came in the mail this, this week. Five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents for the use of thirty-five feet by two hundred feet of Seventh Street. We've been paying a right-of-way use permit fee for probably ten, fifteen years. It's been two hundred twenty-five, two hundred and thirty dollars. So when I saw five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty cents, at first blush, I thought, this is excessive. So I compared it to my property statement. We paid, uh, on our property assessment, we will be paying eight hundred and forty dollars this year. Uh, it, that amounts to about twenty percent of our total assessed value. Uh, we pay about four thousand dollars in, in property taxes. I figured out the square footage for the land portion of our property assessment, and that is...
Steve, if your time is up, so if you can...
Okay, if I can understand, it would be a hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty cents that I'd be paying to the city if we paid the same amount on the property. So what I'm asking is the ability to appeal, because I believe this to be excessive.
Okay, I will have someone get in touch with you. Thank you.
So I'll stay so somebody can tell me if I can appeal.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. All right, is there anything, uh, that brings us to consent agenda? Anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I would, um, I wouldn't wanna pull the vehicles, but if I could just ask a question
Sure.
Um, to our Public Works, can you just briefly touch on the, um, turnover of how often we turn over vehicles? And, uh, the potential resale, uh, what we get when we resell uh, vehicles that we use, and how, uh, the EV specifically, um, is in adherence to our, uh, planning?
Can I suggest, sorry, just procedurally, we're, I don't think we're on the consent agenda yet. So if I could suggest, Mayor, maybe we move other considerations, fleet transition for climate resiliency before the consent agenda, and that might be an opportunity for a lot of these questions.
Okay, we are on consent, but we can, um, I can certainly do that if it makes a difference for people. Does anyone else on council have a concern about doing that first? Brendan, does that resolve your?
As long as the question gets answered, I'm good.
Right. Um, Scott, do you wanna do that? Um, do the presentation now, since it seems like it might answer some of the questions about the vehicles on the consent agenda?
Uh, Madam Mayor, abso- absolutely.
Okay, right, so for anyone who's following along, we, um, at the request of Councilmember Sherman Warren, um, are moving item I one, um, up above the consent agenda um, as it is a presentation on the fleet transition for climate resiliency and may in fact um, answer the question particularly about the electric vehicle. Uh, go ahead, Scott.
So, Council, thank you. Um, so this evening, I have an informational packet brought forward to you. I'm, I'm not looking to make motions or anything. I just wanted to update you on, uh, where we're at with the, uh, transition of the fleet. Uh, it did start about three years ago, and just looking for some general consensus that we're, we are on the right path moving forward is really all that I'm looking for, um, this evening. So, uh, with that said, let's see if that worked. Is it this one? Okay. Yeah, that's what I hit. Yeah, it's got a little delay on the little time there. There you go. Okay. So let's go to the next slide. Um, so as, uh, council may recall, back, uh, in twenty-twenty-two, uh, we started, uh, with the directive of moving forward with this resiliency plan. Uh, since that time, the city's purchased twelve hybrid and four fully-electric vehicles um, in line with those, uh, guidance requirements. Um, this evening, we have, before you tonight, there's additional vehicles. We have two additional electric uh, and one, uh, additional hybrid vehicle on the agenda for this evening, as well as one, uh, that is not. It's a conventional um, gas engine van, um, this evening as well. This list here is just, uh, looking at some of the vehicles, uh, that we surplus and replaced. So, uh, we went to hybrid from these other vehicles. Um, we've got the age of the vehicle, uh, and the mileage, um, that they previously provided, and moving towards, uh, the new ones, so. And this is kinda continuing out with that list, um, up through this last year. Uh, new additions to the fleet, so this is one of our brand-new, um, hybrid F-150s that you may see around town, um, that, uh, Public Works is currently utilizing. And then the Mach-E, as, as you're all well aware, um, a fully-electric vehicle, um, largely operating out of City Hall, and we've got our chargers here, uh, on the eastern parking lot, um, that those operate from. So through the additional, the, the new CFP plan that we have before us for twenty-twenty-five is listing out these vehicles right here. So these are our purchases that are either, um, have already been made or are planned to be made this current two thousand twenty-five, uh, fiscal year. So we have the three, uh, police interceptor vehicles, uh, which are currently being, uh, outfitted, uh, and then the four additional vehicles which are, uh, in the memo, uh, packet this evening, as well as a, uh, there's another vehicle on there that we have not started, uh, for the wastewater department yet. Um, I would like to add the one vehicle that's up tonight for light operations. That is, that is a three-quarter ton van. There currently is not a good, uh, electrical option in the three-quarter ton. Um, if you, if you look at, um, the dealership offerings, as well as what's available on the state contract and source well, other locales, those are generally, uh, the half-ton, uh, two-wheel-drive pickup trucks. They're not, uh, or in vans. They're not the three-quarter ton, uh, models. So that's, that is in fact what you're seeing there with, with light operations. And then just, uh, this is just some, uh, highlights on compliance with, uh, what we were tasked to do within the resiliency of the plan. So we do review all vehicles for their intended mission. I, I do meet with, uh, each of the directors and who's using those vehicles to make sure that we're, you know, following the intent of this, and, and if there's a, a, a reason why, uh, we would stray from an electric, that is, that is discussed. I, I've discussed this. I mean, it's, it's actually how we arrived at the, uh, electric Lightning with the engineering department. We already have electric vehicles here at City Hall. That pickup truck will be used out of City Hall. We already have the chargers over here. Um, that was a vehicle that made total sense to, to go full electric, um, operating out of City Hall. Um, some of the others that are around city, and, you know, the corp yard, other locations, um, the hybrid vehicles made more sense, uh, currently for, for their current mission. Um, additionally, just touching on some of the, the other projects we do around town, uh, with the bike paths and, and, um, things that are going on, connecting sidewalks, uh, is up there, uh, as well. Um, we do have our fleet staff, um, as part of our ongoing, just looking at how the, the fleet department operates. Uh, we, we do have some, uh, future training planned, and we're, we're encouraging staff to, this is new for them, is getting up to date on, on, uh, additional courses related to maintenance and maintaining, um, electric vehicles. So we are looking at that. I do not have anyone, um, that has currently gone through that, but it is something that talks and negotiations are ongoing um, for that. So there'll be, there'll be more to come on that. Um, use of the biodiesel, we do, uh, use that, um, out of the corp yard. Um, and we continue to monitor and seek grants, uh, in the continued support of this mission. So we do have a project out for design, um, working towards, uh, adding additional, adding to our charging network around town. And that kinda gets, it expands on from where we are currently at City Hall. So it actually goes out into the city and placement of EV chargers in multiple locations around, um, the municipality. So, so with that, I mean, good things to come. I think we're on the right path. I think we're making, um, I will say the decisions that we're making, they're, they're not random. I think we're, we're, you know, we're actively looking at, uh, what we're purchasing, why we're purchasing it, and when we need it. Um, so I feel good about that, and I'm happy to answer, um, additional questions. I would, um, to touch on James's, you know, question, similar to the, the police department, your, our, our vehicles, they're, they're not used the same way that an individual traveling to and from work, you know, does every day. So mileage, while it certainly is a consideration, it's, it's not the only consideration when you look at a vehicle. They're not, it's not fair to say that someone driving ten minutes in the morning, ten minutes in the afternoon. That's not exactly how a city vehicle operates. Um, we're not traveling on highways. You know, our, our town here is very condensed, and they're not generally leaving, you know, the, the city limits with those. Um, so they're used a, a little bit differently in that regard. Um, when looking at vehicles, you know, for me, the biggest measure that truly matters is the overall cost of ownership. Um, so it's not just the purchase price of the vehicle, but it's also our ability to maintain that vehicle over time, the cost of that maintenance, how many mechanics that I need. Um, you know, the availability of, of just parts and, and, and having that vehicle there when you need it. So we do take all of those things into consideration when we bring these vehicles, uh, before you for consideration, so. Um, but happy to answer any further questions that council has, and I'd, I'd appreciate just the general, yes, Scott, you're on the right track, or, or Scott, please pivot in this way, would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Um, are there any specific questions for Scott? Brendan, go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick comment. Um, I was actually surprised that I went to look at this exact, exact truck at Price Ford, maybe three, four months ago, and it was ninety thousand dollars. So I thought sixty thousand dollars, sixty-four thousand dollars was a good price for it. Uh, so well done on that, and, uh, I, I appreciate you bringing up that, you know, it's not just the miles that are on it, it's the, uh, everything else, bushing, start-to-dry rot, you know, uh, a lot more services necessary. And twenty-one years is a pretty good lifespan out of a truck, and I appreciate that. So, uh, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Brendan. Anyone else have questions? Are there any nods to, um, general consensus on the direction that we're going? All right, got some thumbs up. Yes, Scott, go ahead.
Um, just to add one other question. I think the, uh, question came up about the surplusing of vehicles. I am looking at something a little different. In the past, we've actually transported vehicles to a location where they would be, uh, surplus in auction. And in the past, I have used other, more online, uh, I've used like publicsurplus.com. I'm likely gonna try that here this year. I think that would go well. It would save some staff time on having to travel. I don't see the need to do that. I think we could put it on the internet and have folks, um, come and look at that. But what we get, there is more value in getting rid of a vehicle while there's still some value, as opposed to it being a pile of rust that I have to then do something with at the end, so. Um, and, and what we get through that surplus auction rolls right back into the fleet replacement plan. So it, it ultimately assists us with, again, the total cost of ownership and managing the fleet plan. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I also was just, well, while you were presenting, remembering that, um, there are state guidelines um, that are currently still in place regarding electrification of fleets as well. So while, while most of the focus of your presentation is on the climate resiliency plan, um, I believe our climate resiliency plan includes some of those outcomes because, some of those, sorry, some of those measures, because they are also, um, state requirements. So, um, thank you for, um, giving that presentation. All right, um, so now we're at consent agenda. Um, is there anything anyone would like to, oh, Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, back in twenty-nineteen, the city council passed a motion saying we wanted to be carbon neutral by twenty-thirty. I realize that's, um, you know, probably not going to be achieved, but that is the direction of council. And that was also not just us as a municipal entity, but as a whole community. So I appreciated, I think near the end of, um, the director's presentation, the, the mention about thinking about placement of chargers throughout the community, not just at city facilities. So it is important for us to think about this in a community, you know, network sense, rather than just individual vehicles. And even within the city, it's, it's a sense of like, how do we trip link to reduce vehicle miles traveled? Not just, you know, are we doing that on a more, a more fuel-efficient vehicle? So, uh, I think there's a, I'm glad for this presentation. Thank you, and I think there's a large conversation to have, big picture, about how well we're achieving overall goals with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right, any last comments or questions on the presentation? Okay, then I will go to consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, um, is there anything anyone would like to add? All right. Is there anything anyone would like to add to the consent agenda? Drew?
Yeah, I'll just go down my handy Danny list. I would like G1 Municipal Code Amendment 25-19 for Chapter 14.03.020, modifying the expiration timeline for building and fire permits.
Any opposition to that? Okay, I don't hear any opposition. Go ahead.
H1 Resolution Amending the City's Master Fee Schedule for Extending Permits and Permit Ready Plans.
Any opposition to that one? Okay.
J1 LW intake structure hydraulic system maintenance contract 2024-28 award.
Any opposition to that? Okay. Anything else?
And then contract 2025-2026, 2025 chip seal project TR06-24 construction contract.
Any opposition to that? All right. Only that we'd love to be able to pave and not chip seal, right? But here we are, in the interest of efficiency. Okay, I will go ahead and read the consent agenda. The City Council Minutes of March 12th, 2025, Expenditure Report from February 22nd, 2025 to March 7th, 2025, in the amount of $2,528,311.63. Vehicle purchase replacement of Engineering Division Vehicle Number 4301. Vehicle purchase replacement of Wastewater Division Vehicle Number 5703. Vehicle purchase replacement of Light Operations Division Vehicle Number 4900. Vehicle purchase replacement of Parks Department Vehicle Number 5332. Memorandum of Agreement Between United States Coast Guard and City of Port Angeles Fire Department Regarding Fire Protection and Emergency Services. Stone Garden Fiscal Year 24 Grant Acceptance. Light Ops Material Purchase Pad Mount Transformer. Equipment Purchase Stormwater and Wastewater Flow Monitoring NEC-2024-38. Light Operations Temporary Building Lease Extension. Municipal Code Amendment 25-19 for Chapter 14.03.020, Modifying the Expiration Timeline for Building and Fire Permits. Conduct the first reading of the ordinance, modifying the expiration timeline for building and fire permits. Waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance. Resolution Amending the City's Master Fee Schedule for Extending Permits and Permit Ready Plans. LW intake structure hydraulic system maintenance CON-2024-28 and CON 2025 to 2026, 2025 Chip Seal Project TR06-24. Any questions or a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
All right. I guess now I can ask, are there any questions? Lindsay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to thank the council and Director Coulson for making time for me to ask questions and, and look at the LW hydraulic system maintenance. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Anyone opposed to the motion, please state your opposition. All right. Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. And that brings us to council reports. So let's start with Lindsay.
I'll pass. Good to see you all commercially.
Good to see you, Lindsay. Brendan?
No report this time. We have meetings coming up next week.
Navara, well, I similarly have a lot of meetings starting tomorrow and the next few days. But I wanted to just mention that as, in the spirit that other council members mentioned at our last meeting, I have been feeling more and more the weight of the decisions of the federal government as they weigh on the city. And I think it's important to continue to acknowledge the impact on our community and the steps that we are taking as a city council. And I think we've taken a few of them tonight, including our presentation by Director Curtin around climate change, right, which is something that our federal government is no longer prioritizing. And, and I'm really proud of us and proud of our community for continuing to prioritize climate change, responding to climate, to having a commitment to environmental stewardship. And the same way with International Women's Day, that we're seeing, you know, rights being revoked and taken away and affirming our commitment to the equity for all residents of our community. And for this month, that, you know, means women. But I think, you know, we're living in a very difficult time. And I think, I think it's worth celebrating the successes and the things that we are, are continuing to do and are providing, I, I hope that we're able to provide some hope for our community members that we will continue to be, you know, living our values and the values of the City of Port Angeles and will continue to, to fight for them and for our residents during this time.
Thank you, Navara. Drew?
Yes, I was one of several council members that was able to go to the State of the City address last Wednesday. And then it was a great presentation. I think the information available online was very useful as well. And I applaud our IT department to actually make that streaming. Having done that, I know how much of a pain that can be, especially because they were operating offsite and not with the actual in the city. And then coming up the next week or so, I do have a recompete meeting this Thursday. Our next comprehensive, comprehensive plan stakeholder meeting is next Tuesday. And then Waseley is still meeting monthly. So I'll have a meeting for that as well. And that's all I have now.
Thank you, Drew. Well, Tricia, go ahead.
Attended the Street Ecosystem Recovery Network meeting earlier this month to meet with the, and to be introduced to the, the new director for the Street Ecosystem Recovery Network. Also had several MRC meetings. We had an MRC meeting last night talking about nearshore restoration projects for 2025, 2027 year. So we're working on that. I also want to mention that on the 13th, or not the 13th, I'm sorry, getting my weeks. The 20th, there is an indigenous climate cinema showcase, five to seven, up at Peninsula College in the Little Theater. Also on the 21st at Field Arts Hall, again, an indigenous showcase cinema, small short films from five to seven. And then on the 22nd, there is a World Water Day event, a water blessing event, starting at Hollywood Beach, starting at 11, 11 o'clock. So I'll be at all three of those events. I also kind of want to thank Navara for bringing all that up. But I also want to add to that, that it's also been disheartening today. I heard that there was an executive order from the White House that revealed Biden's Executive Order 14112, which was to reduce barriers for tribal governments, tribal sovereign governments to reduce, to eliminate barriers for services and for programs and to coordinate with the federal government. And just the other day, he rescinded that executive order, which again brings, does not, just adds those barriers back and allows federal government to not work as cooperatively and find ways to roll out programs and initiatives or meet tribes where they need by reducing barriers. So that was pretty disheartening. And we have a lot of tribes here on the Olympic Peninsula that will be impacted by that rescinded order. So yeah, there's a lot of things that are happening, not just, you know, locally to our federal workers that have worked. So that have been dedicated to the Forest Service, to the National Park Service. But I, here also are the Jackson Building in Seattle. They're looking at relocating those federal agencies out of Seattle. And they don't have a choice. So we're going to be losing some local federal offices that our state relies on and communicates with. And it'll be much harder to communicate with the federal government instead of having those offices locally. So, but I really am proud of our community, like Navara says. They, we, we do tend to, even though we have differences of opinion, we do navigate, migrate to lifting each other up and supporting each other as neighbors, friends and family in a community at large. So it's one reason why I love living in Port Angeles. Thank you.
You were going to mention next meeting.
Thanks for the reminder. I just wanted to mention I will not be here April 1st, and it's not a joke. I will not be here. I will be out of, out of the area. So I will not be in attendance. So I'm asking to be excused April 1st.
Thank you. I don't know how I remembered that, but I will, I had a lot I was going to do last week and then I got sick, which is why I'm still wearing a mask to be respectful to the people I'm sitting next to. And, but I did in between our meetings have an opportunity to go to Victoria for a meeting with Victoria, Mayor Alto, Mary Ann Alto, and she invited me to a lunch they have every other month with the Capital Region District Mayors. And so I got an opportunity to meet with a number of other regional mayors. And I suppose it shouldn't come as any surprise, but they were all very friendly in true Canadian spirit. Really concerned, of course, about what's happening here. And I would say the primary focus of our discussion was how do we maintain the relationship that we currently have, which is quite good and really a benefit to both of our communities? When there's a lot happening by, at the federal level that is causing people concern. Tariffs, of course, were one of the main things we talked about. And of course, what, what current tariffs currently were changed while I was there in the meeting. So we had some conversation about that on the way from the meeting. But I think it was a good use of time. I, a lot of people, a lot of the mayors were thankful that I was there. And I think it gave us just a good opportunity to talk about how we weather what hopefully is not a long storm and maintain our relationship and perhaps work with other border cities to help maintain theirs as well. While we're, while the federal government sort their things out, but our relationship still really matters. So that was, that was nice. And also, of course, of concern is the health of the Koho as they made up some ground, I think, post COVID. But they're definitely seeing a drop in trap, in traffic. And we know that the economic impact to our community is pretty significant. So hoping that we'll be able to continue to support them going forward. And I will turn it over to Nathan.
So Mayor and Council, two quick items for you this evening. If you were not able to see my State of the City address last week, it is available on the front page of the city website. In fact, you'll be invited to view it as soon as you enter the city, cityofpa.us domain. Additionally, Council, we will not have a March work session this month. And hopefully those of you who are taking spring break, I hope you all enjoy it, as will I. And Council, that's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our second public comment period. This is the comment period for any not on tonight's agenda topics. If anyone is here who wishes to speak on something else, I see James is already on his way down. Go ahead when you're ready.
Again, let's stay in the city. There was an interesting conversation in front of the Realtor group about the fees on undeveloped property for the water utility fees. And I think there's a couple unexamined consequences of those fees. One of the, one of the consequences was, there was, there was a rather vocal person describing, he's going to take his multiple lots and combine them into one, thus avoiding any fees at all on his vacant property. And then after listening to that conversation, I understood that, let's hypothetically, I want to peel 3,500 square feet off the front of my vacant, my property that has an alley house. Well, I'd have to pay a fee on that. So I have no motivation to subdivide off that piece of property. Now, also when we had the fee readjustment to the properties and we raised the price of dividing property times 10, we additionally introduced a motivation not to divide our properties. Now hopefully, he's gone, hopefully during the comprehensive plan, we can get rid of some of the R9 and make it all R7. And thus we will have the, the ability to build on some of these larger properties in West PA once we clean up our discharge off of our, our waste facility. And that property can be developable. But if we keep it at R9, we're discouraging density. And I think this fee structure where we're charging vacant land is also discouraging density. I, I know it's unintended, but you know, as if I was a developer and I'm not, I would have no reason to make my large 9,000 square foot lot out in West PA smaller. Now, the other thing that happens is if I have a 9,000 square foot lot, there's a real tendency to put my house smack dab in the middle of it. And thus that property isn't subdividable. I bought a house in Salem where it was on four tenths of an acre, but the house was smack dab in the middle of the piece of land. I couldn't realistically put other houses on that piece of property. And I think that's what, an unintended consequence of this fee structure does. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
John Rolston, City of Port Angeles resident. It's always hard to follow somebody by the name of James Taylor. Yeah, I hear you singing all the time. Anyway, I'm going to comment, of course, I don't want you to have the impression that I'm anti bicycling in any way, shape or form. But I noticed you've got something out here to bid 8th, 10th Street Bike Lanes, such and such project number. Get bike lanes, kind of work on an intersection of 8th and A. So I'm assuming you're going to take the bike lanes across 8th Street, going to make a left-hand turn on A as an apple. And then it looks like, I guess, from this stuff, you're going to take a right on 10th. I would encourage you guys to go look at 10th Street from A, oh, about five or six blocks. It's 10th Street and it intersecting off of A and it must be C, D, E, F. It's one of the highest inclines you're going to see. When I'm riding a bike, I either go up 8th or 12th or 16th. So then it leads me to believe, of course, I suggested that you, instead of 8th Street, and 8th Street is a paving project that they're throwing into bicycle lanes and other things. So let's call it what it is. And I suggested using 7th or 9th. When I see this proposal, now it seems you don't want to use 8th anymore. You're going to go to 10th or something else. I'm making that assumption. So the other assumption I'm going to make is, well, with doing this over in that direction, there must be an alternative to tap into some different additional funds from some other source to deal with the capacity issues that we have over there. So you're going to try to say it's bicycle lanes, but we're going to get money for stormwater or sewer or other capacity issues on this A Street basin. So I'm really concerned about the inconsistencies as I see them leaving 8th Street now. And now you're going over to some other common residential streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Barbieri? And Mr. Barbieri, can you print, pull the microphone down a little bit closer to your mouth? Thank you very much.
Okay. My name is Glenn Barbieri. I'm a resident of Port Angeles. Actually, I had something here, a rough draft of a letter I'd written up tonight. It would take about two and a half minutes to read. One thing that I've learned from this council is you don't give the city a mandate without the funds to cover it. So this particular, two suggestions might be derived from this letter. And I am willing to give the city council $400 to say, even look at the ideas. Is that acceptable?
I'll have to check with staff. So go ahead and finish your comment and we'll talk after.
Okay. As you know, I've been concerned about, you know, the SquatchCon convention and I've decided since that it really doesn't seem to be working for me, I refocused not so much on the convention itself, but why I wanted to go there. So that's still a work in progress. But I am getting more and more interested in local politics, as you know, and I have decided that after much reflection and looking at, at myself, that it'd be much more better, much better for me to get into an advisory role of some sort rather than a leadership role this year. So I still don't know whether or not I'll get the seat on the council for the senior center. It's, so I hadn't heard about, and as I, this is a resume mail, we haven't checked yet. So we'll see how that goes. I did get a chance to see Brian Smith, someone in action today at the senior center. And I do appreciate the skill and diplomacy he used in a was an interesting, rather delicate situation. So I do commend him that. So I will, no, I can look at, I can give you the rough draft of my letter if you want. If you want to take a look at it. No, it's, I just, I just, we're talking tonight, so it's very much a documented action. Or we can talk about that next time after you do some preparation on things. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else? Okay, we don't have anyone online, so we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. And I just want to note that I realized it's not quite seven and it was late later, but it's still light out and that's kind of nice. So thank you.